The Budget Appropriations Committee is in session for Day 6 of budget hearings. I am Danielle McRae, and good morning. I'm the councilwoman representing the 2nd District as well as the chairwoman for this committee. I would ask that everyone at this time, if you have not already, please turn off or mute your cellphones. Joining us today, we have committee members, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, and we are also joined by, thank you, and we're also joined by Councilman Mark Parker from the 1st District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, and Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District, as well as several representatives from the mayor's office and the city council president's office. Our committee staff person today is Perom Manandi. At this time, we're going to have a presentation from our health department, and whenever you're ready.
Good morning, Chair McRae, and members of the city council. I'm Mary Beth Haller, the interim commissioner of health for Baltimore City. I'm proud to be here today to present the FY26 budget for Baltimore City Health Department, and I would like to highlight the incredible and indispensable public health work that is being done daily by the dedicated and mission-driven workforce within our agency, despite ever-evolving and changing and challenging circumstances. During the last year, BCHD has made progress on a number of fronts. For example, in finance and operations, we've continued to make improvements to our contracting process, and as a result, we've decreased the average processing times by 32 days. Our Be More for Healthy Babies initiative has had exceptional results. It serves as a national model, and according to the most recent data available, Baltimore City continues to see one of its lowest infant mortality rates in its history. Notably, both the Upton Druid Heights and Patterson Park, north and east neighborhoods, have had infant mortality rates lower than the overall city, eliminating the black-white gap in infant mortality in those two community sites. Baltimore City maintains its lowest rate of reported tobacco use during pregnancy at 4.6% for the second consecutive year. In service to the city, BCHD has worked closely with the mayor's office to establish the mayor's overdose cabinet and overdose stat to provide the subject matter expertise and robust data around the city's efforts to address overdose and substance use. In partnership with the mayor's Office of Overdose Response, BCHD also created the agency's overdose infrastructure plan, which is a five-year plan focusing on core public health functions to address substance use and overdose, including plans for a new division within BCHD. We launched a harm reduction vending machine program in 2024 and installed four Sharps disposal boxes, collecting 148 pounds of Sharps between July and December of 2024. During the legislative session this year, BCHD championed a priority bill that passed, which updates the law that created Baltimore's Syringe Services Program and removes stigmatizing language and unnecessary criminal provisions. Our Division of Aging and Community Support continued to address food insecurity among older adults and other vulnerable populations. Working with its partners and contractors, the Division served food insecurity residents by providing more than 181,000 meals in congregate settings, 542,000 home-delivered meals, and 43,000 food boxes. These examples are only a portion of the work of BCHD, but they demonstrate the impact that the agency has. I want to recognize and thank the dedicated public health professionals and administrative staff across our organization who carry out this work for their continued commitment to our residents and to our city. Some of that team is with me here today, and I would like to introduce them. And I believe I have a big list. Just a moment, please. I don't want to get anyone's title incorrect. So, beginning with Daphne Hicks, our Director of Administration, well, actually, let me start with the front seats. Kelly Eastman is our Chief of Staff. Unye May Ekba, she is our Chief of Finance. Jennifer Martin, to the front, is our Deputy Commissioner of our Division of Population Health and Disease Prevention. Francine Childs is our Acting Deputy Commissioner of Youth Wellness and Community Health. And newly promoted Byron Pugh is our brand-new Deputy Commissioner for our Division of Aging and Community Support. Back to Daphne Hicks, she is the Director of Administration for Maternal and Child Health. Camille Burke is our Assistant Commissioner for Health Promotion and Education. Jessica Speaker is our Assistant Commissioner for Environmental Health. Ayesha Burgess is our Director of the Office of Youth Trauma Services. Laban Jama is our Deputy Chief in the Division of Finance. Asia Kimaguchi is, sorry, is our Chief Information Officer in our Office of Information Technology. Phyllis Lee is our Chief People Officer in Human Resources. In the next row, we have Adina Greenbaum, our Assistant Commissioner for Clinical Services and HIV Prevention. Janne Goens, our Epidemiologist in the Bureau of Maternal and Child Health. Sharon Colburn, our Director of Animal Control. Lenisha Childs, our Assistant Commissioner for Communicable Diseases and Outbreak Control. Sherica Green, our Interim Director of Overdose Prevention. Lynn Ferrari, our Interim Assistant Commissioner for Ryan White and Community Risk Reduction Services. Chanda DeShields, our Director of Field Health Services. We have Ashley Cunningham, she is our Director of Adolescent Reproductive Health. We have Blair Adams, way in the back there, she is our Director of Communications. And on the other side, here, we have Jim McGill, he's an Assistant Commissioner in Aging. Alice Wong, she is an Assistant Commissioner in Community Services in Aging. And Kudra Rowe, our Director of Client Services in Aging. We have behind, we have Sadiya McKee, who is our Chief Policy Officer. Kim Eschleman, our Director of our Office of Public Health and Preparedness. And I also brought Victoria Menge, who is our, who is a special assistant to the Commissioner. I know this is a lot of people, but I brought so many people because nothing is accomplished alone. We could not do this, and in addition to all of these people who show up daily to fight for our city, we could not do this without the support of the administration and the council, the close collaboration of our other city agencies, our numerous partnerships with community and faith-based organizations, and most importantly, without our very real relationships, strong relationships in the community. Now, I'd like to turn to our agency goals. I won't review the ORE chart, it's fairly self-explanatory, but for the agency, I'll review for our goals. Our goal is to improve equitable and inclusive access to healthcare services and to use evidence-based interventions to address the city's most pervasive public health challenges while strengthening our partnerships. We also look to improve administrative processes, standard operating procedures and systems. This includes focusing on making continued improvements to the grant management and compliance, improving recruitment and retention of staff, and expanding our equity work through additional staff trainings and implementing the Language Access Plan. This budget year is different than other years due to the unprecedented steps being taken at the federal government, in the federal, at the federal level. BCHD is about 72% reliant on grants, and 49% of our funding comes from the federal government. This includes pass-throughs that go first to the state and then come to the jurisdictions. I mention this to illustrate our limited flexibility within our agency's budget. Grant funds are not interchangeable between services as the activities of grants are prescribed by the grant requirements. Loss of funding in one area does not mean that we can use another grant to fill that gap. This is essential to keep in mind as we move through the rest of the budget today. At present, we have experienced few actual cuts, but cuts are certainly anticipated. What we have experienced are some, the effects of the dismantling at the federal level of some agencies. Not having the program officers and project managers for our grants causes disruption, it makes it difficult for us to communicate, new requirements to have to write a justification for even the most routine of drawdown requests, all of these add to the bureaucracy and red tape and slow the process down. So, it has, it has an effect on our ability to administer those funds. I do want to level set, the budgets may need to be revisited as events unfold. To ensure we're prepared, we're in conversation with the city administrator about the need to maintain core services in the wake of possible cuts, and we will need to prioritize and consider what activities are core public health activities and can only be done by BCHD? What activities directly improve equity and health outcomes? Where do we make the greatest impact? And what activities are statutorily required, even if they're not funded? As always, our mission remains the same: to protect health, eliminate disparities, enhance the well-being of everyone in our community through education, coordination, advocacy, and direct service delivery. We work every day to serve the residents of Baltimore City with compassion, integrity, and to the best of our abilities, no matter what the environment we find ourselves in. Now, I would like to move into the budget. I'm not going to read the service description in the interest of time. I will speak primarily to the performance measures. As you can see, we had more than 1,250 clinic visits for STIs in FY24. I do want to point out a typo in the FY25 target, it says 1,500, it should be 15,000. We have adjusted our target for FY26 due to funding and staffing changes. You can see that number is lower. This is due to loss in funding and reduction in staffing that happened actually last year. But some accomplishments of the clinical team include investigation and treatment of individuals diagnosed with tuberculosis. We've expanded clinic times through reorganization of schedules, and we've launched our electronic medical record. Our Assistant Commissioner, Dr. Adina Greenbaum, actually traveled to DC two weeks ago to speak to a congressional delegation about the importance of continuing to fund HIV and STI prevention work. We've been active advocates in this space at the state and federal level, and we do not intend to stop, and we do not intend to stop now. In our Healthy Homes program, we have the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program. You will note the number for FY, the actual for 24, is quite low. This is because we only have two licensed environmental sanitarians performing this work, and one of them is actually the supervisor, who would normally be supervising the group of four environmental sanitarians that we have. We work very hard to recruit environmental sanitarians, it is a nationwide problem. Many people have left after COVID, others reached their retirement. We are working hard to hire. We did recently hire a new sanitarian who is in the process of onboarding. These positions have very rigorous hiring requirements and a very, very difficult exam that has to be passed. Sometimes we go through the training, the education, everything they need to do, and then sometimes they move to a different location instead of staying in Baltimore City. The Childhood Asthma Program, we help families identify potential asthma triggers in the home, and we teach families how to administer medication. We're proud to report that we hit our target for this metric in '24. For overdose prevention and harm reduction, our Community Risk Reduction Services Team operates the Syringe Services Program, also called SSP. Our SSP was the first one in the state and has been instrumental in drastically reducing the transmission of HIV among people who use drugs. We train clients in long-szon administration and connect clients to myriad services. As part of the new Division of Public Behavioral Health, we're adding a new metric, the number of individuals trained in long-szon administration by the Health Department. In FY23, we trained nearly 5,000 individuals, and in FY24, we trained nearly 6,000. Moving now to maternal and child health. We recently had the pleasure of presenting to council about our agency's programming and services, which of course includes nurse home visiting, services to infants and toddlers, nutrition support, reproductive health for teens and adults, immunization, and numerous other services. This service includes our Title X Reproductive Health Clinics. This is one area we know we are receiving federal cuts. The Title X funding is being cut by 32% in FY26. While the exact impact is not known, we're projecting that this could mean a reduction in 600 fewer clients annually. We'd hope to hire additional administrative support and health education staff in FY26, but instead, we're eliminating those positions to retain our current staff who are funded through the Title X funds. We're pleased to report that along with our Be More for Healthy Babies partners, we've updated our maternal and child health strategy, and that will be released in FY26. For school health services, this service continues to be jointly administered by BCHD and the Baltimore City Public Schools. Our health suite, as you can see, our health suite visits dropped significantly during the pandemic, but steadily increased as students returned to full-time in-person learning. Additionally, return to class rates have increased to the pre-pandemic rates. Moving to health services for seniors, both of these metrics are based on projected referrals from the Maryland Department of Health. We're on track to meet or exceed those FY25 performance measures. For emergency services, which also houses our Office of Acute Communicable Diseases as well as Preparedness, as well as Field Health Services, in the past few fiscal years, we performed significantly more outbreak investigations. This was primarily due to COVID infections. Our non-emergency medical transportation program provided over 45,000 transports in FY24 and has provided 35,892 rides in FY25 through April of this year. Our Office of Public Health, Emergency Preparedness and Response has responded to over a dozen emergency incidents so far in '25 to support city healthcare facilities. There have been IT outages, fires, weather threats, HVAC concerns, et cetera. We partner with more than seven exercises with city, state, and regional partners to ensure we are at the highest state of readiness. Not advancing.
Why don't you go sit right there?
Okay, I'll go ahead, sorry, I'll go ahead. Youth Trauma Services, okay, it's up now, includes our trauma-informed care training for agencies and organizations that provide direct services. With the exception of the launch year, the average number of staff trained is over 500 annually. Moving on to administration, the recommended budget for this service is just under $20 million, which includes funding for six positions that were transferred from other services and 14 positions funded by realizing savings elsewhere in the agency and reducing the allocation for temporary staffing contracts. Moving to animal services, the Office of Animal Control operates 24/7. It receives an average of 65 calls a day and approximately 22,000 complaints annually. Even with these high numbers, the Animal Enforcement Office continues to have a nearly 100% closure rate for its top five priority services, which include animal endangerment, an animal attack against a human or other animal, an aggressive animal, police standby calls, and police standby calls for assistance. Our environmental inspection services work. Our environmental sanitarians continue to be responsive and helpful. They take the time to explain the code and investigate, and the investigation practices. We work to help constituents correct violations and even volunteer personal time after hours to help constituents resolve problems. They also continue to close out complaints in a timely manner. The closeout time has improved 4% over '23 actuals to FY24. Our next service is chronic disease prevention. I do want to point out the first metric we experienced, which is the Tobacco Alex Check for Compliance. We experienced numerous challenges from the loss of program leadership for nearly eight months, and that led to significant contract delays. I will point out, though, that while enforcement, which is what that measure is specific to with regard to the primarily corner stores, there are other enforcement parts that are key to the program. I mentioned this, compliance is obtained through educational visits, and the team did conduct 823 of those. Similarly, our staff addresses 311 complaints regarding potential sales of tobacco products to underage individuals. Our virtual supermarket program numbers have been decreasing over time. When the program was a new idea, this was very popular, and then in the pandemic, we had really very high usage. These are primarily located in senior living facilities, so this was really of great assistance during the pandemic. But also during the pandemic, others began delivering groceries. It wasn't sort of the only game in town anymore, and interest has waned. In addition, in October of '24, a giant that was our partner, they started charging for delivery services. So, we were trying to work with Instacart to develop a contract where we would still pay the delivery services. We worked with them for months, and then ultimately, they decided against that partnership. We want to hang on to it, though. We do have, you know, these 142 individuals, they do use the program. We want to give it another year. We have expanded to two more sites. We want to see how those numbers come in. So, there is an increase around virtual supermarket in our, in our budget. We don't want to, we don't want to lose that. For HIV treatment services for the uninsured, our percent of clients achieving undetectable viral load remained at 90%. This means that they, the virus is not detected in their system by lab tests and can't be transmitted to others. The second metric reflects the work of our city's contact tracers who reach out to individuals newly diagnosed. We are still recovering from the state, from a state cyber incident in our, in the state's new system, but we've been resolving that data and backlogs. We investigate over 1,000 cases of sexually transmitted diseases annually in the city. In May, we actually, the team hosted around 100 community members to discuss how to increase use of PrEP, the medication that can prevent HIV. And last fall, the city conducted an advertisement campaign, increasing awareness and reducing the stigma around HIV, HIV prevention, and PrEP. Moving now to our senior centers. The senior centers' activity reflecting the performance measure include activities at all 13 centers. We provide, and as you can see, we have very high usage that has increased certainly post-COVID in our advocacy for seniors, which is our next service. I'll go ahead and speak to this. This is a service area that focuses on connecting older residents to services. The metrics include the number of calls that are processed by the Maryland Access Point, the MAP, which is the entry point for information and referrals for older adults with disabilities, their families, caregivers, and professionals. We've shared about MAP with all of their, with all of your offices, and I'm going to highlight them again today. Please spread the word to your constituents, this is an excellent resource. I'm going to go ahead and move on to service 724, if that's okay. This is Baltimore City Health Department Senior Care Program. We provide services that help people remain in their homes. The program received additional funding in 2024 to service wait-listed residents, and you'll see that directly reflected in the number of new clients. Can you go back one? Thank you. You'll see that reflected in the number of the new clients for that year. The state provided some extra money in FY25 to continue reducing the waitlist numbers. However, it was about a third of the amount received in FY24. The service also includes our public, adult public guardianship program. As the agency, area agency on aging, our deputy commissioner, who oversees the Division of Aging, serves as the guardian for people who have been adjudicated as needing a guardian for whom no one else can be identified. Ideally, the guardian is a family or friend, but sometimes we are needed as a last resort. Our team goes to great lengths to find a family member or friend to serve as a guardian for each potential client. And our final service is community services for seniors. In this service, 725, the number of older residents receiving home-delivered meals has decreased since the height of the pandemic, which is to be expected. The use of taxi subsidies has exceeded our target, pointing to the continuing need for the service. The Taxi Card Program provides older adults and persons with disabilities with smart cards through which they can purchase rides from participating cab companies. The costs are subsidized by a grant from the MTA. That concludes my presentation, and we're happy to take questions and have further discussion.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for, thanks for introducing everyone, or most of your team that you work with. I know that there are folks that are not here, but I do think that it's important that we are able to put a face to a name to know when I, when I need to speak to Jessica Speaker, who Jessica Speaker is, and vice versa as well. I do want to welcome committee member Paris Gray, who has joined us, as well as Councilman Paris Gray, I'm sorry, and also Councilman Mark Conway, who has also joined. For my first question, it was, it was very important for me that when the funding started, not the funding, but with the opioid restitution fund, that the Health Department received funding. And I'm happy about the first allocation that's being provided to you. I'm looking forward to seeing a lot more that is provided directly to our Health Department to assist with the city's response. Regarding the 25 new positions, can you let us know exactly what these positions are for and what these, and what these employees will be doing within the Division of Overdose Prevention?
Yes, I can. I would like to call on Jennifer Martin, Deputy Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Haller. Jennifer Martin, Deputy Commissioner for Population Health and Disease Prevention. Thank you, Chair, and good morning, council members. We, when the mayor announced the allocation of restitution funding to the Health Department, we went back and, under the leadership of Commissioner Haller and in conjunction with the mayor's office, developed a five-year infrastructure plan to invest across the agency. As part of that, we are creating a new division. However, we are taking a life-course approach to the work, and so, we are actually funding and creating positions, not just in the new division, but also in other parts of the agency, including in the Division of Aging, as well as in maternal and child health, so that we can have targeted programming also for pre- and postnatal populations, youth, as well as older adults. Within the new division, we are funding some leadership positions, so we will be hiring a deputy commissioner to be over the new division. We are also hiring a Director of Overdose Prevention Strategy and Policy, as well as augmenting our capacity for data analysis, so epidemiologists and epidemiologist supervisor, as well as some planning support. And this team will be focused on helping to support the efforts of the needs assessment and strategic plan as outlined in the mayor's executive order and working in conjunction with the mayor's Office of Overdose Response. But we'll also be doing planning and data analysis work on an ongoing basis to support the needs of overdose stat and the cabinet, as well as the Restitution Advisory Board.
Thank you for your thorough response. Again, just want to reiterate, I'm looking for more funding to come to, directly to the Health Department. It's something that I've advocated for, I'm pretty sure the other It's something that I've advocated for, I'm pretty sure that other members have advocated as well regarding our city's response, and we will continue to.
Thank you.
We're going to go to council, our Vice President, Sharon Green-Meadleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair McCray. I guess before I get into my questions until the President of the Council arrives, on his behalf, I, we as a council really appreciate everything that the Health Department does, and I just want to let you know, everything that you do does not go unnoticed. You are so important to our city as, you know, the list, you went down the list. You are involved with schools and our youth, you're involved with older adults, diseases, animal control, I mean, every single aspect and everything that goes on in this city, the Health Department is involved. And we know that you have been through a turnaround in leadership, but many of you have just stayed steadfast, have held on. You have shown your dedication, and we all thank you for everything that you do. Everyone depends on the Health Department, and we just appreciate every single thing that you do on a daily basis. That just had to be said before we, you know, move on with questioning. And I know that the mayor and the council president, you know, most of their initiatives deal with health, the health and well-being of everyone in our city, so we can't thank you enough for that. So I could go down a whole, we all could go down a whole list of questions, but we're, I'm going to limit mine to my two, but I also want to make a comment. As many of you know, I deal with older adults and also serve on that commission, as I have been. And as I entered into this council, I was, started almost as an older adult in my 50s. And so there's one thing that I just plead that you change in every single paper that you have. We have to stop saying seniors and start using and putting in the top of the language, older adults. I kind of mentioned that to Wreckin Parks as well, and going to continue to do that so we can just continue to say that, because I know a 50-some-year-old does not want to be called a senior as well as a 70-year-old. So please, just change that in all of your language and continue to just say older adults. I think the commission would appreciate that as well. So my question, I'm going to start with mental health services. So given the increasing demand for mental health support, how is the department planning to allocate resources to enhance mental health services? Are there partnerships with community organizations to broaden the reach?
For Baltimore City Behavioral Health System Baltimore is the public behavioral health authority. We do intend to forge a closer relationship and expand services in the new Division of Public Behavioral Health, which is going to be composed of the overdose work, as well as place more of a focus on behavioral health generally. I could, I would like to call on Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, they may be able to speak more to the mental health services.
Sure, sure. Does that person here, someone up to the mic?
Adrian Brightenstein from Behavioral Health Baltimore.
And you can say who you are.
Good morning, Adrian Brightenstein. I'm the Vice President of Policy and Communications at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. Also with me is Dan Rabid, our Policy Director. Happy to take any specific questions.
So just kind of explain where you are, and do you have, are you partnered with organizations? How, what's, give us an update of mental, mental health and what the department is doing.
Sure. So for those who aren't familiar with us, we are a nonprofit organization, and we are the city's local behavioral health authority. So what that means is we have a direct MOU with the State Department of Health to oversee the full continuum of mental health and substance use services in the city. So that continuum is anything from prevention to early intervention services to treatment and recovery services, all throughout the city. It looks, what it looks like is majority of services that are funded through the public behavioral health system, so Medicaid-funded services that are reimbursable through that program. But we also administer around $60 million in grants for services that aren't reimbursable through Medicaid. So that's a lot of your prevention services or your behavioral health crisis services, such as 988, for example, or wellness and recovery services and harm reduction services. We partner very closely with the city Health Department on harm reduction services and overdose prevention, as well as prevention education services for children and youth in our city schools. So that, that's in a nutshell how we partner. In terms of the system, the system in Baltimore City serves around 75,000 people annually for mental health and substance use disorders. Across the city, we have around 300 different distinct programs. Again, those are that full continuum of prevention to treatment and recovery services that we oversee with, in partnership with the State Department of Health.
Thank you. That's a lot in a nutshell, so there might be some other council members that might add some questions to that. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
And then my second question, Gears awarded community engagement. What efforts are being made to involve community voices in the decision-making process for health initiatives? Is there funding for programs that facilitate community health, education, and outreach?
Yes, community engagement is a large part of nearly every program in the Health Department. Community voice is extremely important. I think for, you know, in past decades, sometimes funding was used and the community was sort of, okay, we're here to help, this is what we're going to do, but there really wasn't, like, what does the community think is needed? And we actually, that is the approach we take. We look at the data, of course, we look at what those needs are, but we also need to be sensitive to what the actual community is asking for, and listen to community to see what they are asking for, and not to make presumptions about what we need to give to them. It's a component of pretty much every grant in the agency. Our Be More for Healthy Babies Initiative, for example, partners with over 150 organizations. Many of these are community-based organizations of all sizes. Whenever we're working on a strategic plan, community engagement is a huge part of it. You know, having focus groups, ensuring that community voice is really central to the work that we do.
When you say you look at data, could you be more specific? Do you have specific technology where we as council members can look up data for our individual needs?
We have some dashboards that can be used to look up. It depends on the area that you're, that you're speaking to, because much of it is protected public health information. It wouldn't necessarily be immediately accessible. But the way we use the data, you know, we can look at the incidence of where certain disease prevalence is greater, we look at death rates, we look at many, many factors. We also are doing our neighborhood evaluation, our neighborhood needs assessment. It's been five years since we have done that neighborhood, actually maybe closer to seven, but that is underway, and we hope to get that out this year. Those are the kind of things then that are available to the public to look neighborhood by neighborhood, to see some of that data, and that can be very helpful as council members.
For example, like HIV, where, you know, is there a way we can check to see where are the target areas of HIV in our district? And, you know, that would help us figure out what other resources we could use in that particular area.
Yeah. Deputy Martin, can you speak to that specifically for HIV?
Good afternoon, or good morning, again. I would like to actually ask if Dr. Greenbaum would like to come up to the podium, or Dr. Ferrari, to speak about some of the efforts in, in HIV and what data is available publicly.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Adina Greenbaum. So HIV is an example of a mandatory reportable disease. We probably have, when it comes to different types of health outcome-specific diseases, the mandatory reportable diseases is probably in most cases where we have the strongest data available for different geographic areas. That absolutely can be, can be shared, and the geographic, how specific can be shared, how small of a geographic area it can be shared on, just needs to be in compliance with our local and state data sharing to make sure that we're complying with, with privacy and following the guidances that interim Commissioner Haller mentioned.
Is that particularly HIV, since we're using that as an example, is that supported by money coming in from the federal government?
Yes, it is.
So your-
At least in part, sorry.
Your agency will be affected tremendously with, as we're moving through what the federal government is doing to our country right now?
It's something that we're following very closely to evaluate what the impacts could potentially be.
All right. Thank, thank you. Councilman Gray, I'll stop at this point so other council members can ask questions.
Thank you, VP. Appreciate it. Sorry, trying to readjust. So, good morning. Before I start, I want to give you guys a huge thank you. So last year, around this time, we lost Giant and MS Village Shopping Center. They up and deserted the community with little to no notice, no official notice to the prior councilperson, Councilman Burnett. We actually found out through hearsay through their employees. And we were fortunate to, yeah, we were fortunate to have partnered with you and DOP to support our aging residents in accessing produce boxes across the community. And the great thing about it is we received no complaints about the delivery and the access that you were able to give to them. So I just want to publicly acknowledge and thank you guys for just the advocacy and partnership that you gave to my constituents in a time of need. And we're thankful for the LE market open and another grocery store that will be coming soon, but for that time, we were a food desert, and you stepped in, no questions asked. And that's what we love about the Health Department. Also want to thank your team for supporting our community members during uncertain times. And just for your caregiver program, my chief of staff, Kim, was a part of it. If anyone knows Kim, she's a tough cookie, it's really hard to, to impress her, and she has nothing but great things to say about you. So I think that is the biggest stamp of approval you guys can get in Baltimore City, but she really loves that program and how I was able to set her up for success with her family members. And so I just want to publicly acknowledge you. For my first question, given the significant portion of Baltimore City Health Department's budget that relies on federal funding, and understanding that in FY25, the adjustments reflect known grant awards rather than estimates, what overarching strategies and budget reallocations will the Baltimore City Health Department implement to continue its mission of protecting health, reducing disparities, and improving community well-being for all of our residents, particularly in our most vulnerable populations, if federal funding streams become less reliable or reduced?
Thank you for that question. This is a really fluid situation, and because we are so heavily grant-funded, I mentioned in my remarks that, you know, we apply for a grant, there are grant parameters. It's a little bit backwards, like, we know as a city how we, like, what is needed. Our constituents tell us. We know what is needed. We then have to look for a grant that helps us implement initiatives. We don't get to dictate the parameters of the grant, but we try to match grants with what we want to do, and to the best of our ability, write proposals that are in keeping with the needs of the city of Baltimore. When those grant funds are, are cut in, in Grant A, for example, we can't look to Grant B to transfer. This is why I said we may need to come back and revisit the budget. We're going to have to prioritize, and tough decisions are likely going to have to be made. But with that said, there's something that I, I want to keep in mind, and I hope all of us can try. We don't want to lose so many staff that when this passes, and we can all hope that it will, we have critical infrastructure. We need to keep as much of it as we can, even if it is a vacancy. We need to keep it because there will come a time when we will have grants again. And it may seem very far off, but I have to keep that in mind. We have to look to the future. We will get through this, and there will be curtailment of programs. That is, without a doubt, that is going to happen. Some of the factors, as I mentioned earlier, that we will be looking at is, you know, is the Health Department the only one that can do this? But when I say those things and I speak to prioritizing, I'm speaking to the use of our general funds. I can't do that with the grant funding. I can't just move people from one grant to another. That's why in our budget, in a couple of places, people are moved off grants and onto the general fund. We need to save the intellectual capacity of the Health Department, the expertise, the dedication, and the commitment to this city. We know we have a tough time ahead, and we hope with the council's assistance, we'll be able to get through it, and with the help of the administration. But yes, we're not, we're not wearing rose-colored glasses on this.
You know, I really appreciate that, that honest and candid answer. As a follow-up, do you guys have any specific contingency plans that are being developed to prepare for and mitigate the impact of potential federal funding, defunding on the critical public health services in FY26 and beyond?
Did, did you ask if there's-
Like, specific?
Specific funding that's dedicated to-
Well, contingency plans, specific contingency plans.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing your appropriate-
Specific contingency plans?
Oh, contingency funding?
Yes.
Not really, but we will look wherever we can. We will look to other grants, we will look to philanthropy, we will look to partnerships, but we also are, you know, have to realize that many of our CBOs and our partners are going to be experiencing the same thing as a result of COTS.
Thank you for that. My next question revolves around behavior and mental health. And before I start, I want to acknowledge my colleague who's here today, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, who has been a strong voice on behavior and mental health, not only infrastructure, but more importantly, equitable access to it overall. And I really appreciate the leadership that she has taken on this, so I just want to publicly say thank you. Please clap. And it is my hope that with the, the new head of the Health Department, that we make sure that we're tapping into not only the wealth of knowledge she has, but so many others on this front, because it's really important in a city like Baltimore, which actually leads to my next question. What steps is the Health Department taking to rebuild its behavioral and mental health infrastructures? And how is it thinking about expanding access to recovery services in a way that doesn't contribute to the oversaturation of under-regulated facilities and our disinvested neighborhoods? contribute to the oversaturation of under-regulated facilities and our disinvested neighborhoods?
Um, in terms of the, um, overdose response, I'd like to defer to Jennifer Martin with that piece of the behavioral health.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Councilman, for the question. So, um, for the past eight months or so, the Health Department has been working again in conjunction with the Mayor's Office of Overdose Response, um, to conduct a needs assessment, um, as outlined in the Mayor's, um, executive order around the restitution funding. Um, and as part of that, we've been engaged with a number of, uh, providers and conducted many key stakeholder interviews and, and have also gotten input from people with lived experience. And I can tell you that, um, certainly talking about the larger behavioral health continuum of care has been something that has come up time and time again and is being incorporated, um, into our, um, uh, development of the strategic plan. Um, when it comes to specifics of, um, what's happening in the, uh, behavioral, uh, health space, um, I would like to ask if, um, Adrian would like to, um, add anything?
Oop, hello again. Um, Adrian Brydenstein with Behavior Health System Baltimore. Um, so, uh, I heard, uh, in one of your, in part of your question, I heard around, a question around access to the broader system of care. Um, so we're doing a couple of things related to that. One of the things, so just to, to level set, that Baltimore is very fortunate to have is we do have the full continuum of services within our jurisdiction for the public behavioral health system. So we do offer prevention, early intervention, and then treatment and recovery services. And again, majority of those services are funded through the Medicaid fee-for-service system. So that means if you are eligible for Medicaid, you are covered and you can get access to, you can get these services. It's around the access. We can be doing a lot more, um, across the city to make sure that people get access to these services. So one of the things that we've been really hyper-focused on maximizing and taking advantage of, uh, for the past several years is, um, the 988. I think many of you know 988 is the three-digit phone number that people can call. Um, historically, it's been promoted as a suicide prevention resource, but in the city, we have used it for so much more, but people just aren't aware of that. One of the things that BHSB did this past fall, um, with some research where we got input from community members and people with lived experience on why they would not be using this resource to access substance use services. Um, and we learned a lot. Um, we learned that people don't see it as a resource for substance use, but it, it actually is. We get a lot of people who do call and need to, are looking for information on how they can get, um, uh, in, or how they can get into an opiate treatment program or a recovery house, but a lot of people don't know that. So, um, what we need to do is shift and pivot and make sure that more people in our community are aware of that. We are partnering with the city Health Department and the Mayor's Office to do that now. We know it's not a quick, you know, snap-your-fingers, easy fix, and it's gonna take a lot of work collectively to help spread the word. Um, but that is one of the easiest ways that people can access services within our system of care is calling 988, and we need to do more to, to maximize that.
Yeah, and, um, thank you for that answer, I appreciate it. Um, but I just want to dig deep on the expansion of access to recovery services. When I speak about this, I'm intentionally asking about recovery homes. Um, and, um, I, I could probably speak to a council member. Um, everyone has, um, everyone acknowledges the, the issues with the under-regulated, the unregulated ones, the under-regulated ones. Um, there are ones that in my community live in close proximity to me that I, I know it's there, but I only know because I literally just know, but there's, there isn't a, uh, public nuisance aspect, um, but we do know in a lot of, um, communities, that's not the case. Uh, in a lot of underserved communities, that's not the case. Um, and while we definitely want to make sure that everyone, no matter who they are, has housing and has a place to stay, um, a lot of these places are becoming a public nuisance. Um, and how do we balance expanding access and finding places for people to stay, but also being very intentional, um, about, uh, making sure we're not just oversaturating the under-regulated facilities and our disinvested neighborhoods?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, uh, so as I've mentioned earlier, BHSB oversees the system of care in partnership with the State Department of Health. Um, we can only, we only have authority over things that we have regulatory, are responsible for regulatory compliance. So if it's an unregulated recovery home, there's nothing we can do. Um, not nothing, let me clarify. We get a lot of complaints about those types of programs. What we do is we send them to DHCD, who does have the authority to do something, um, but you are pointing to an issue that we hear about, which is these types of, um, they're marketed as recovery homes, but they are not regulated by us or the State Department of Health.
Yeah. And, and so, just one more follow-up on that. What, what types of compliance infrastructures will the, uh, Health Department in conjunction with, uh, with, uh, BH, uh, SB, um, have to transfer those patients from the unregulated clinics to the proper care that they need and deserve?
So, uh, regulation for the public behavioral health system is set at the state level by the Department of Health. They are in the process of revising regulations to strengthen them. We've been very involved with helping to build out the regulatory compliance at the state level. Um, it applies to all types of programs that are funded through the Medicaid program. If it is a unregulated recovery house, it does not apply to them. Um, so, I mean, I, I can't speak to what the local, uh, regulations are for that, I can only speak to what happens at the state level. Um, but they are actively revising them now. They're actually out for public comment. Councilwoman Porter is gonna talk to you about that. Um, and, and, um, they are intended to strengthen them so that, uh, they can bring more programs into compliance.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Um, I, I appreciate the answer. But I, I want to, um, this is a delicate subject, as we all know. Um, and so, you know, oftentimes, I am speaking to my constituents, saying, "Hey, everyone deserves a place to stay." Um, and so, um, I, and I appreciate the collaboration you guys are doing to come up with, um, with, in the study that you're doing. Is there any public input? Um, are you guys reaching out to, uh, local electives, um, in different jurisdictions to see what we're seeing and to see what our neighbors are seeing? Because I often, I know on the technical side, you know, I'm, please do not ask me, I'm not a subject matter e- expert, but on the personal and people's side, I think, um, there should be some input from the communities at large, uh, for what they're seeing. Because I think, one, um, it would better help you guys kind of level set with the community, but in the inverse, you're also learning, uh, the different tactics or the different ways in which, um, these facilities are coming into neighborhoods. Um, oftentimes, you know, well, all the time, we don't know about it. And so, it, you know, it, it, it makes everyone seem like they're, they're powerless against the ones that are not doing the right thing. Um, but at the same time, I just want to also state that so many are doing the right thing, um, and it's just the ones that aren't that, the other ones that are sucking up all the oxygen. And so we're not really having those intentional conversations about people getting the recovery that they need. So, um, thank you for your answer. Um, I'm gonna take back my time and pass it over to Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Um, Health Department, you know you have a special place in my heart. Um, what, uh, Chairwoman McCray shared about just the need for additional funding, additional resources, um, we know that public health is under threat right now, and interestingly enough, um, and the Commissioner and I were just talking about that before the hearing started, you all are truly the real heroes that are really pushing forward in public health. Our local health departments are literally the, um, hopefully going to save public health, um, and over the next four years. So I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, um, and I look forward to working with you all, um, over the next couple of years. Um, particularly, I want to go back to a question from, um, I want to go back to a question related to, uh, our federal funding cliff. And I know, Commissioner, we had talked about, um, just the likelihood of that happening, not within this year, but as we look forward to FY26 and beyond, um, that pathway between federal government, state, and then coming down to the city. You mentioned that some of those positions have gone over to the general fund. How many of those positions have actually gone over to the general fund from grant-funded positions?
I would have to check on the details of that and get back to you.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can make that an official committee request, please?
Yes.
And so the official committee request is, um, within the Health Department, how many of those grant-funded contractual positions have actually been transferred to the general fund? And if we can get a dollar amount for those as well, that would be great. All right, cool, thank you. My second question actually has to do, um, Adrian, you know I love you, I'm gonna bring you back up. So, we talk about, I, I want to go back to the question regarding the unregulated, um, mental health and substance abuse clinics. One of the ways, and, and thank you so much for working on the COMAR regulations, I'm at the state level, you all, along with the Health Department, really took a, a great role in developing those COMAR regulations, um, with the former secretary over the past two years. And so I was grateful to be in those rooms and hear how you are advocating for, um, just behavioral health all across the city. And so I just want to thank you personally. My question has to do with, oftentimes, we are looked at as, you know, kind of solely relying on the state and the federal government for those types of regulatory levers that we can push. Have there been any conversations with DHCD? So these recovery homes, we know that they have to have a rental license, we know that they have to have certain parameters in place through our UNO, through our fire department. Have there been any conversations about the inter-agency, um, kind of checkpoints of these types of recovery homes? Because they're, they're going through a city, they're going through a city process, um, and they're getting through the city process. Have there been any conversations to that effect?
Yeah, we've had several, uh, BHSB has had several conversations with DHCD on how we can strengthen our partnership when, when we, because like I said, we do get complaints about recovery homes, um, which is more like residential housing-
Yes.
-which I view differently as clinics, um, that are unlicensed and, and unlicensed by the public behavioral health system, we'll say that. Um, and so we have had conversations with DHCD on how we can better partner to share information so that they have our information and can act accordingly within, um, within whatever regulations guide how they act. Um, but, you know, I do know, uh, back to the Councilwoman's question earlier on what other jurisdictions are doing, um, I do know other jurisdictions rely more heavily than I think Baltimore does on zoning-
Zoning, yes.
-to determine where these types of programs can set up.
Yep.
Um, I will preface this, this is, zoning is not my wheelhouse, it's not even BHSB's wheelhouse, but it, when I look at, you know, we talk a lot to Baltimore County, that's one of the tools that they have used to determine, this is where we're gonna have programs set up in our, our jurisdiction. So that could be something worth exploring in the city.
So, to follow up on that question, one of the, the identifiers of the application, when we talk about the Good Neighbor Agreement, we talk about, um, those types of, of recovery homes coming into communities, it's like the chicken and the egg.
Mm-hmm.
So you have to have a prospective need for those types of services in, I think it's a one-mile radius, or-
A pardon?
Yes, for those need, for the services, so like, any type of recovery services, they usually have to do a community needs assessment attaching to the Good Neighbor Agreement in order for them to get their license, right?
Potentially, that's up, uh, that, that may be changing.
Oh, that may be, okay. Okay, so the, the, the current process. So, have there been any conversations about really attacking and enforcing or providing enforceable language to that Good Neighbor Agreement? Because we can't just solely rely on zoning because it becomes a constitutionality issue.
Mm-hmm.
Have we talked about any type of enforcement language that can be added to that Good Neighbor Agreement?
That is something, uh, this idea of community input and engagement is something we have brought to the state. They have not included that in their COMAR regulations. One of the things that we have asked, and it's not in COMAR, um, the revised version, and we would love to partner with you in this, so let me go there, um, we think that any provider, new provider or, um, existing provider that's coming into the system should have to meet with their local behavioral health authority before they get their agreement from us. So we are working really hard to get that, um, in the new regulations. The purpose of that would be so that we can put eyes on a program before it opens or put eyes on a program. It, it's opportunity for engagement, right? It, it gives us an opportunity to see a program, how they're operating, if they already exist, or see a new program before they set up. So, um, we think that's an important step, that locally, we should have, um, the authority to do, and so we are working to see if we can get those in the COMAR regs. We'd love to partner with the city council to have, if you want to also submit, uh, feedback to the state on that, because it is not currently in the revised draft. Um, but I think that's an important step, again, with helping to strengthen our provider network and ensure that we are having good providers come into our system of care.
Yeah, and the public comment that I did leave had some, had to do with that as well, like, just the enforceable language within that Good Neighbor Agreement, but also having a codified community engagement component to this process.
Mm-hmm.
Because right now, communities, you know, we're just plopping these things all across the city without having any type of community engagement, as the Chair mentioned, so, okay.
And I would say just because we can't, if the state's not accepting that feedback, I, again, I wonder if that's something we can-
We can do-
-set up locally.
Yep.
I don't know how, but I would say it's worth exploring.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Porter, may I make an addition? Um, JD Merrill, interim deputy mayor for Equity, Health, and Human Services. Uh, thank you for your leadership on this, and Councilman Gray, thanks for the question as well. Um, you know, the Scott administration, we want to make sure that everyone who's ready for treatment, ready for recovery, is able to have access to it. Um, and we hear the concerns, and I think that this is a great, uh, opportunity for our new office of overdose response and recovery to look into, uh, inter-agency work that can be done to help improve the quality of treatment and recovery. Uh, Sarah, is there anything that you'd want to add?
Good morning, Councilmember Sarah Whaley, Executive Director of Overdose Response. Um, I do want to add that we have had many conversations with our partners at the Health Department and at BHSB, um, about opportunities that the city can explore, um, to help with the unregulated recovery homes, um, and just overall improving the quality of our treatment and recovery services across the city, and what kind of opportunities we have at a local level to help, um, empower community members that when they are ready to enter treatment or recovery, that they have the information, um, around what is a good program and what is not a good program. And so I think in addition to looking at different regulations, also, um, exploring opportunities to communicate to the public so that they can make informed decisions about what types of programs they engage with. Um, and those pieces will be part of our strategic plan. So things that we heard in the needs assessment that the Health Department led, um, will inform our strategic plan that we'll launch, um, hopefully this summer. Um, and there will be opportunities for public engagement and public comment around the strategic plan, so we make sure that we are approaching this in a way that is also, um, in line with what the public is asking for.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, friends from the Health Department colleagues, for all your good work and for being with us this morning. Um, I want to begin a little bit, I know we've, we've had conversations, uh, over the last few months around this, but just to kind of, here in this place, have the conversation and speak about it. Uh, Service 303 Clinical Services, uh, the work that's being done there is, um, is incredibly important, um, and is one of the key ways that, that the Health Department and the city through your work is, is plugging gaps for, for uninsured, underinsured, vulnerable populations in specific areas, um, and having that face-to-face clinical contact, um, uh, with residents, uh, vulnerable residents in our community. Um, I, will you speak a little bit to, um, I, the, I think two things here. One is, I, I note that between 24, 25, 26, budget-wise, um, the funding, although the balance between general, federal, and state has shifted significantly between those three years, the total, nine million, eight and a half million, eight-point-nine million, it's been fairly consistent, but the staff numbers there dropped from 65 to 52 to 48. Um, to speak to that dynamic around total budget numbers and staffing and, and what's, what's the, what's the move staffing-wise in there, and what is it saying about our capacity?
Was this total Health Department numbers, is that what you're referring to?
Clinical Services, Service Line 303.
Okay, Clinical Services. Um, I would defer to Deputy Martin.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, uh, Councilman, for the question. Um, I think, uh, I would like to have some time to, uh, s- study a little bit more the budget book, um, uh, and the shift in positions, but what I, what I can share is that, um, uh, as, uh, we've been transitioning to a new electronic medical record over, um, just a little over a year now, um, and as part of that, we've made some changes to our clinic flows and, and some of our staffing levels have changed because of that. Um, we also had some, uh, changes in, in funding, uh- We also had some changes in funding last year that led to a reduction of some staffing capacity within our clinics. But the details are something I need to study more in the budget book if there's a specific question about numbers.
I appreciate that, and I knew that there, I knew that there had been those reductions in staff and capacity. And the only thing that struck me today in looking at, or this week in looking at this, was that it wasn't matched in like a total drop in, like the total funding there in the service line was there even as the staffing was dropping. And so I'd love to learn more about kind of how those two numbers are moving in different directions or in that way.
And Councilman Parker, I'm happy to opine in here a little bit. Part of that increase that we're seeing year over year, that's not staff related, is coming from contractual services within this, within clinical services. So contractual services year over year is up by one point one million dollars. A part of that is coming from some subscription costs associated with different items that are managed here, bringing those lines in line with prior spending. The other thing that is a new expense here, as the Health Department has worked on reallocating their budget, is an overhead cost associated with different grants. So part of what you're seeing here in terms of the change year over year is the department's effort to get expenditures in the right place within their budget.
I appreciate that. In terms of staff capacity and, and Ms. Martin, you mentioned, Director Martin, you mentioned some changes in staffing and staffing models deployment. Will you speak to particularly how that's impacted our STI clinics? And just say like, you know, a year ago or fifteen months ago, here was our model, here's where we are now. And I suspect that also is behind the drop in target from fifteen thousand to six thousand, which is incredibly substantial. And so just, I mean, I know it's a sad thing to talk about, but I think it's important that we're all on the same page in terms of what's happening there.
Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate the question. And I might ask Dr. Greenbaum to come up to fill in detail for me. But at a high level, we did have a loss of some funding through the state last year that impacted our ability to be able to have staffing capacity for our sexual health and wellness clinic, to be able to be open at our, both of our locations every day, Monday through Friday. So we have shifted and we have an alternating schedule now. But as I mentioned, we also have been moving to a new electronic medical record and along with that have come many changes, including we now have a patient portal, which means that patients can like log in and get their lab results directly. They don't have to make an appointment to come back to the clinic to get test results. So that leads to a reduction in some kinds of visits. But we also are, now that we are about a year into the new system, we're starting to take a look at the data over this past year and dig into some of the changes that we're seeing to better understand why we're seeing the fluctuation in numbers. But I will say in the budget book, when you see the change in targets from twenty-five to twenty-six, that is specifically due to that loss of funding that we experienced for this fiscal year and just knowing that we can only operate on alternating days in that clinic.
Did any of that funding, I noticed the state funding in this entire line went from one point four million to two hundred thousand, back up to eight eighty-nine. Does that represent any restoration of funding specifically to the sexual health clinics? Or is that state funding for other things in the service line? I mean, did we get anything back? Did we have a better year in Annapolis, I suppose, is what I'm saying?
So there are several state funding streams that come into this service category. But there was not restoration of any of those funds that specifically affected the staffing.
Very good, thank you very much. My second question has to do with three sixteen, Youth and Trauma Services. I notice in here, so I'm really encouraged to see the increase in funding for Youth and Trauma Services, especially twenty-four to twenty-five and twenty-six. I know that matches very much with the administration's priorities across the board and glad to see that the Health Department is a big part of carrying that forward. I noticed in particular that we have a staffing increase of five positions to carry out that work. Would you speak, would somebody be able to speak a bit to what those five positions are for and how that's going to help us better serve and increase our capacity to serve our young people?
Yes, I would like to ask Ayesha Burches of our Director of Youth Trauma Services to speak to that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Again, my name is Ayesha Burches, Director of the Office of Youth and Trauma Services. Our office currently have fifteen general funded positions and five of additional positions are GSS funded, grant funded positions. So our currently funded positions are supporting our healing, the work around Healing City and coordinating and facilitating the trauma-informed care training for city agencies. In addition to that, we do receive requests from community-based programs as well as other community-based organizations. So our staff is really building capacity to respond to those requests in addition to working with our subcontractor, who is specifically working with those agencies that are legislated, that are mandated to receive that training and the legislation. This year, we brought on a social program administrator who will be monitoring and providing the oversight and management for the team that is developing and coordinating the trauma-informed care work, but also I'm developing a strategic direction for our suicide prevention work as well.
Thank you very much for that. And just the only follow-up there is alongside, along with the general increase in funding in this area and the five new positions year to year, there's a really distinct increase in contractual services. Maybe that's the subcontract you were just speaking about, but from three hundred forty-eight thousand to two point two million. What's, can somebody go into the details of those services and how that's helping supplement the work of the service line?
I believe this may include an item that was misallocated in trauma services, which was the You Choose project, and that is going to be realigned and placed back under maternal and child health.
Okay, so there's, to your knowledge, there's no actual huge jump or leap in contractual services in the service line?
No.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank you guys. Thank you, Acting Commissioner Haller. I know you stepped into a sort of weird time, but have nevertheless kept the department on task and continue to do so. So I appreciate you swooping in and all the work that you've done. Also, I want to thank all the folks within the department for all the great work that you do. I know how important and how critical it is to supporting the sometimes complicated problems that we see across the city. And of course, with some of the urgent issues, opioids and any other number of issues, you guys are the folks leading the charge, and so I really want to thank you for that work. I have a couple of questions. I'll be pretty brief to that end. Oh, I also want to note, a couple of my questions have already come up, which is great. I'm glad to hear that we're going to see a comprehensive plan this summer. So appreciate the work of the administration on this. And I shared last year a list of recommendations, about fifty recommendations with the administration. I'd be curious how much of that ends up in the final recommendations. Nevertheless, I'm looking forward to working with you guys on making sure we're very thoughtful about what we move forward with. I want to go back, Deputy Commissioner, excuse me, Acting Commissioner, to the notes you had around cuts at the federal level and how that might affect us. You talked about it a little bit with Chair Porter. I'm curious, one of the things you're going to provide to us is what cuts there are. And I'm very curious if you can add to that effect how we suppose to close those gaps for those critical functions that we want to maintain. So if you can just add that to the requests, that'd be really helpful. Whether it's general fund or other funds, we intend to go to the state or we intend to use opioid restitution funds, that'd be helpful to know.
Councilman, Councilman, could you repeat that request? I want to make sure we captured it correctly.
Sorry, I'm soft spoken. The question is, I want to know how we're thinking about closing potential gaps should the federal government remove critical funding for grants? I just want to know that we're thinking in advance about those prospects because I believe they are high. The other question that I had was around nine eight eight. And particularly what utilization has looked like over the last couple of years. It's been in existence now, how many years, two or three? You have to press the button to the right.
Dan Rabid, Policy Director at Behavioral Health System Baltimore.
Sure, just clarifying, for nine eight eight, how long have we been operating nine eight eight?
Well, nine eight eight is a federal program that launched July of twenty twenty-two.
Got it. I'm curious what utilization of nine eight eight has looked like. I know I've certainly been promoting it and noting some of the, you know, mental health issues that we see across the city and great need that we have for folks. I think it is incredibly useful. It's been helpful with some of my constituents. But I want to make sure that more folks know about it. I'm curious if we have data on utilization over time and if we're continuing to see that gradually rise and how quickly.
Yeah, well, we've definitely seen a steady increase since July of twenty twenty-two. Some of that has been people switching from the four one oh number that was the Here to Help hotline that the city had prior to nine eight eight. Some of it was from the state's two one one Press One program being kind of funneled into nine eight eight. But even in absolute terms, the calls to crisis lines from Baltimore City have been increasing steadily. It varies from month to month. Adrian ran up with our email data here, so thank you for that. I think we've been hovering around kind of like five thousand calls a month to nine eight eight and the other access points to nine eight eight. We've also seen a huge explosion of text messages to nine eight eight. Some populations prefer that. And that was very rare before nine eight eight launched in July twenty twenty-two. And now hundreds of text messages come in every month.
Can you provide a breakdown, maybe by month, of utilization of nine eight eight for texts and calls? And then I'm also curious to that effect, how are we measuring outcomes from those cases and those calls? One of the things we come across a lot, certainly with the fire department and EMS, is folks dealing with chronic mental health issues that we consistently interact with. I'm sure you guys are very familiar with that issue, and I'm curious what we can do to to truly be supportive for those folks. Because I think we see those issues on both sides. Certainly calls to nine eight eight or in other capacities in our hospitals or otherwise, but they are repeated callers of nine one one or people calling nine one one for those folks. And it suggests to me that sometimes those folks are getting lost in the cracks and our system is not always fully capable of meeting their need. I think nine eight eight is one of those opportunities, but I'm not sure where things should end up for those folks.
Sure, and serving those folks who have not been well-served by the traditional system and have been maybe falling through the cracks is a really important priority for the nine eight eight system and the city and BHSB. One quick note, as we go through like a lot of this data every month or two when the city's consent decree, Behavioral Health Collaborative meets, so invite everybody who's interested in this to join those at the mayor's office and BHSB co-chair. To take, I think there's a couple of parts to your question. One is how do we measure success? We do look at how quickly we are able to answer calls. We can answer calls in under ten seconds, like more than ninety percent of the time. So that's people not having to wait to get their call answered. We look at how many folks can have their concern resolved on the phone. And again, that's over ninety percent. For those folks who cannot, we have a range of like services that we can dispatch, including peer-led mobile crisis teams, nurse-led mobile crisis teams and collaboration with the police department if that's absolutely necessary. And so that's another way that we respond if people's needs can't be met just over the phone. And then we still track, like, if we dispatch somebody out into the field, how many of those situations can be resolved in the community versus having to transport someone to a hospital or a crisis bed? So we're looking at all of that all of the time. To serve Baltimoreans who maybe are like frequently call crisis services or nine one one, we do have a nine one one diversion program and the stakeholders that are involved in that program, fire, police, nine one one, meet regularly.
If I can be more pointed, if I could be more pointed, I think what I'm trying to get to here, because I think all those are helpful metrics. Certainly they're indications of activity, people using the system. And in some cases, for instance, where we resolve the issue over the phone, a resolution, an outcome. But it's the folks that we aren't necessarily able to solve the issue over the phone. Sometimes they need more chronic care treatment. And do we at all know that information? Can we get that information? And how do we know that when we refer them to our partners that we are actually really resolving those problems? I think that what I'm trying to get to here is if we refer someone to, if we actually get someone to call in to nine eight eight and we have them, we have them on the hook, I want to make sure we actually help them. And I know sometimes their cases can be very complicated, but I want to make sure that there are actual resources at the end that truly can help folks and, you know, someone who's dealing with bipolar disorder or schizophrenia or, you know, depression or something like that, that can't be solved over the phone, but would need some longer care. And so if you could share, maybe this is an official request to go with the other. How do we measure outcomes in those particular instances where folks have chronic mental health issues? And to the best of the data that we have, and maybe we can think about how we collect this data going forward, you know, how well do we refer them to services? And then if we are able to, can we get any outcomes from those services to show their stability thereafter? Is that clear?
Somewhat. Yeah, I think if I can rephrase it, you'd like some data on how, how the hardest to serve are, like how we track those individuals and how nine eight eight or the system at large kind of refers them to higher levels of care and how effective those higher levels of care are at serving folks?
Yes, if those higher levels of care result in the outcomes we'd like to see, yes or no? So we refer them to, in some instances, a substance abuse treatment program. And do they find stability after that, yes or no? I think too, one of the things the administration alluded to, you know, sometimes we may refer them to a provider that is not that great, and we don't necessarily know that. And if we're not tracking their outcomes thereafter, we're passing them off into someone that's not necessarily resolving their problem. And that could be for any number of reasons. Maybe they don't have the resources, or maybe they don't have the expertise, or maybe they're the wrong person to handle the issue. So I'm thinking systematically, and I want to make sure that our systems actually connect people to the care that they need. And I think nine eight eight is the tip of the spear in many instances. It's the first instance that we are actually conversing with someone, so is that clear?
Yeah, I think we can gather some data to that. And one thing I will say is like, there's so many, these cases are very complicated. A lot of the times it's housing or criminal justice involvement or, you know, other factors at play that make it hard for folks to achieve stability. Serious mental illness or serious substance use challenges are, you know, years-long challenges. So like it can take a lot to help those folks attain recovery. But absolutely, we should be looking at like our service. But absolutely, we should be looking at like our services getting folks to where they need to be and happy to gather some of that data.
Yeah. I'll say this and then I'll move on to my next question, it's just a statement. But part of the reason why I asked this question is because maybe years ago when we first started, when I first started chairing the Public Safety Committee, and I remember before when I was in city stat, we noted that there was less than 100 people that were a majority of the calls to 911 that was really taking up a lot of time with EMS. And so we also realized a lot of those people were dealing with substance abuse issues or chronic mental health issues. And so if we can find ways to truly resolve those issues as opposed to putting a Band-Aid on it, we might actually reduce the number of 911 calls, take some stress off of our EMS teams and be better able to serve and respond to, you know, urgent issues across the city. So that's my thought here.
Absolutely, very important.
Councilman, could I just add? We have a Behavioral Health Leadership Collaborative that we'd love to welcome you to join and sit in on where a lot of this data is reviewed, and I think you'll be really impressed with the level of thought and detail and collaboration that you see across BPD, Fire, BHSB, Health, and the mayor's office. And so we'll follow up to make sure that you're aware of those meetings. I also did just want to add that from the Opioid Restitution Fund, we do have $10 million that was allocated through settlements for expanding awareness around 988, which will help to address your question about making sure that people know about it. There's also $15 million allocated for 24/7 outreach, which is going to benefit folks who are experiencing behavioral health challenges, not just those who use drugs. Executive Director Whaley, anything you want to add?
I will also add that there is a $10 million allocation to the B Corp initiative, which I also think gets at some of those points around wraparound services and what happens after a person is stabilized post-crisis. How do we ensure that there's continuity of care? And there's two pieces of the B Corp initiative that I think will address that. So I appreciate your question around the system, and we are looking at this like holistically and the full ecosystem of supports and restitution funds and continued kind of partnership and collaboration around how we address all of that as a whole.
Music to my ears, music to my ears. Thank you, guys. All right, I look forward to the invite. And my next question is very, very straightforward. I noticed under Service 307 that we removed everything around the crisis stabilization centers. I peeked into last year's book that is now not popping up on my tablet, but we had crisis stabilization center metrics there that we're looking at, the number of people going to our crisis stabilization centers and the percentage of people that blah, 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 essentially trying to get to some of these outcomes for folks that are interacting with our system. We took that out of our performance metrics this time around, and we have a bunch of new ones, which I think all actually looked pretty great. I'm curious why we removed that and do we still collect that data? I'm sure we do, but.
For Service 307, this work is going to be pulled into the new division. So that's why you're seeing that these are no longer applicable, but the information is going to be collected, and there will be new measures that will be under the new division. Deputy Martin can speak more in detail to that.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the metrics, the measures that are in the budget book, these are the new measures that we've developed for the new division that's being created. But appreciate your point, Councilman, around, previously there was a metric around the crisis stabilization center, and that data is reported to us through BHSB. They continue to collect data and evaluate the effectiveness of that program, so, you know, the work continues. It's just not a metric anymore specific to the budget book.
When we updated the metrics, which are not coming up on my iPad right now, so I can't see them all, but was there any coordination with the grander plan that we're close to finishing? My thought here is, I would imagine for that service that the plan around our approach to substance abuse would, of course, these would be the same metrics that that plan would be looking to address. So was that considered? Is that, because it's not done yet, I'm sure you guys have seen the draft, you probably wrote the draft, but how are we considering those components? I'm not necessarily suggesting that this needs to be there, but I do want to make sure that we're thinking about it holistically and that we're not just pulling it off and maybe losing sight of some of the things we have direct control over, that's all.
Yeah, I really appreciate the question, Councilman. So we did have a lot of internal conversation and also worked with the budget office around the measures that are in the budget book this year. But to your larger point around evaluating all of the work that's going to be happening with the funding, you know, these are not the only performance measures that we will be looking at internally in the Health Department and certainly in our collaborative work with Director Whaley and with the mayor's office. There's a lot of conversation around the restitution funding and what performance measures and metrics will look like to evaluate the work that is funded through the restitution funding. So this is, you know, for purposes of the budget, but there will be many, many other performance measures that are being evaluated.
So does that mean we're, there's still a potential that this may change for the '27 budget, these metrics?
I guess from my perspective, I don't know how Director Larson feels about it, but I know, you know, we want there to be stability within, in metrics and in the budget book, to be accountable to you all and the public. So I don't anticipate changing the measures in the budget book frequently, but we're certainly flexible to what meets the needs of the city.
Councilman, just echoing Dr. Martin's comments, as I'm sure you can appreciate, we don't want to change the metrics every year because if we're changing the metrics that we're presenting to you every year, this body will not be able to see the trend information. And more importantly, also within the administration, we won't be able to leverage that data to help inform how we invest in outcomes for our residents. As Dr. Martin mentioned, these new metrics were developed in line with the needs assessment and how they're thinking about how we want to track these types of activities, not only in the Health Department, but also how we're thinking about tracking these types of investments with community partners that are part of the work. To that end, because of the volume in the budget, we ask people to report on no more than five metrics per service. We like to think about metrics as a family of how much did we do, how well did we do it, and is anybody better off? And so that is why you see our agencies constrained to know more than five. But certainly, all of, many of the agencies and, you know, the Health Department's the leader in this, track a lot of additional information to help go deeper than those headline items that we're tracking in the budget. And we would be more than happy to continue to collaborate with all members of the council about how we strike that balance of keeping information manageable about what we present in the budget, as well as providing some of the supplemental information on some of these areas where you all would like to go in more deep.
I appreciate that, and I agree with you. I think, I can end it after this, but I think I'd rather we get the metrics right, because I think we'll be, if we get it right, we won't have to change it so often. So, and I do believe that getting it right starts with having clarity of what we're trying to achieve, and that clarity will come hopefully with a plan. And once we have that plan come out, the draft out in the summer, that'll help us be clear about what we're trying to accomplish and help us prioritize those, you know, high-level bellwethers of how things are going. And lastly here, I think, sorry, just let me finish.
Very brief, please.
Let me finish my thought. Lastly here, I think it's important, in instances where we have data going back a number of years anyway, for instance, there are things here that I can't see on my tablet that are listed as NA, that we probably have data going back 10 years. We probably could still put that data in the budget book, and where possible, I would recommend we do that, so that we still don't lose the trend, even if we may change the performance metric.
Certainly, and that's one of the items that I'm working closely under the guidance of Deputy City Administrator Kearney and D'Artagnan in the OPI team, that as we go back with agencies to refine their performance plans, that we are adding, you know, filling in information where we have it that maybe hasn't been reported in the last couple of years. We're also leaning in, going to be leaning in a little bit more as we think to '27 about how we better track new metrics and better flag, because one of the things that's a frustration for me, and I'm sure it's a frustration for many of you, is it's difficult to understand whether or not a metric is new. And so one of the things that we'll be working with going into fiscal '27 is making that much more transparent and also disclosing either in the budget book or in the performance plan application why the metric was changed and why we believe that the new metric is a better reflection of what we were tracking before.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you, Councilman Conway. Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to briefly get back on the conversation around how we properly or improperly oversee the care of people suffering from addiction. So residential care facilities, which I, it's in the term in our zoning code, is the idea of a, essentially a group home where the rent is paid by either Medicaid or a private insurer. We had a couple of different terms up here, and I'm not an expert on this ecosystem. But this is definitely something that I've heard, we saw some really heart-wrenching news articles about improper care from sort of predatory entities over the last year, and certainly a lot of frustrations from residents, and I've heard this from other council members as well. And so I'm mainly curious, because the Baltimore city has a pretty lax set of rules around these, and other jurisdictions in Maryland have rules like caps on the number of beds, either fixed or based on the lot size, and licensing to ensure the quality and compliance of these facilities. I think Montgomery County caps their number of beds at, I think it's eight-bed total. I mean, they also, they have a, they have a licensing board like what we are about to implement in the city, and that is licensed under, their residential care facilities receive a local license as well. Has the Health Department looked at whether safeguards like this, you know, could and should be applied in Baltimore?
Are you speaking to licensed facilities or unlicensed facilities?
So my understanding is that there's a state licensing already in place, but there are, like Montgomery County has a local licensing regime in place as well, and I'm curious if this is something that should be explored here as well.
I think the Health Department would be open to exploring something at the local level, whether it be a local ordinance or some other measure or licensing program. We're open to exploring that.
Okay, yeah, I think with the licensing board hopefully coming online, you know, in the, early in the next fiscal year, as well as, yeah, just in general, some of the peaking frustrations and even amongst several homeless advocacy groups have raised the concerns about these institutions, I think this is a really important thing for us to be taking very seriously.
And we're happy to look at what other jurisdictions are doing.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies for having to duck out for a minute. I first want to say, interim director, thank you for, you know, picking up as needed and leading an agency that is so important to us. You've got a great team, you've put together a great team. I can tell everybody is so dedicated to the work, and your leadership and support is pretty amazing, so thank you very much. I wanted to go back to the conversation around the positions. There's several positions that were funded through the Health Department, through ARPA, and wanted to understand a little bit about what's happening with those positions. The chart that I have from the Recovery Office, let me just see here, one, two, four, seven, almost 12, 13 positions, and it doesn't tell me exactly what they are. So are you going to be, I'm assuming that there are people in these positions right now that are being paid through ARPA, and given that that is unfortunately going to end at some point in time, I wanted to make sure, I'm just very interested to make sure that our people in these positions are still going to have jobs after that. I know that you've got another financial crisis coming, we have discussed it already today, and we want to support you in figuring out how to address that. But what about these positions that are ARPA-funded?
I'm going to ask our Chief of Staff to speak specifically, but I can tell you is that as the ARPA-funded positions and also COVID-funded positions have decreased over time as a result of the pandemic drawdown, we've worked very hard to try and find alternate employee employment within our agency, interviewing folks, trying to find other spaces in the Health Department for those who performed well and wanted to stay with us and had that kind of commitment. I'm going to defer to our Chief of Staff with the specifics.
Hi there, Kelly Eastman, Chief of Staff. So I'd actually love to maybe compare our lists. I don't quite have 12 on mine, but maybe you do. Oh, okay. Yeah, we have about eight that we're looking at. So for, three of those are moving to the General Fund starting in FY '26, and then we have about four to five remaining on ARPA through FY '26. And at that time, again, you know, we'll continue to the degree possible to, you know, look for vacant General Funded positions to put them into if we can, and looking for other opportunities to bring them on. As Commissioner Haller mentioned, we've been working very closely with all of the staff who are funded through ARPA to remain at the department or in other agencies as they can, so if you have anything you want to add to that.
And Councilman, I just want to offer just some clarification. When we're talking about moving people from ARPA to the General Fund, in this case, we're moving them, we're not moving the position, we're not moving additional positions from ARPA to the General Fund, we're moving individuals into.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yes. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, but that's what I meant, because the positions would be eliminated because the funding's eliminated. I just want to make sure that folks who have really dedicated, done an amazing job, particularly during the pandemic, into, you know, city government, so, and to keep them.
And I think when we look at the Health Department, ARPA-funded positions, they are slated to go through fiscal '26. There is ARPA funding available. And one of the things that we, that I'm working on with the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs and the City Administrator, as we prepare for fiscal '27, to take a look at all of these different elements of what is currently funded in ARPA that will expire as we go into fiscal '27, to think about how that is part of our strategy going into the fiscal '27 budget.
Right, it's going to go in two years depending on where the grants ended.
Yeah, just each of the different project budgets from ARPA support have different expiration dates in terms of when their ARPA awards will run out.
Right, yeah. Well, the Health Department, again, received a bulk of that and money, and like I said, every, you know, community health worker, every, you know, researcher, every, you know, has done just an amazing job. I really want to keep them in city government because I think they're amazing. So, and I think Director Larson, we had talked in other hearings where you're doing the same kind of thing with some of the other departments, just because we were hoping to not have to fund so many positions, but I think in the Health Department, we had to, just given the crisis anyway.
Well, and I think the Health Department is a little different than some of the other agencies that receive ARPA funding, because they are doing job functions associated with the pandemic that, you know, are shifting or changing or winding down. And so when you hear the, when you hear Commissioner Haller talk about the strategy they're taking, it really is about looking at what other openings they have on their team where they can slot individuals into those opportunities that maybe have a recurring source of funding.
Yes, thank you. My next question is actually the council president asked me to ask this one about the trauma-informed care work. First of all, I think the work that the department's doing is really great. Can you talk a little bit about the next steps in that work?
Yes, we're currently training the fire department. And we were also requested to work with DPW. We have not selected the agency that will follow on from that. There is interest among a number of agencies as to who would have that training next. But we think it's very important training. And it has evolved and it had a lot of input from the Trauma Informed Task Force, the Steering Committee, as to what the different elements in that training should be. And early on, we realized, you know, sort of a basic trauma 101 wasn't necessarily enough. So we wanted to have modules where, you know, initially, yes, everyone would have trauma 101, but where we move through different elements, like restorative practices, things that would help leadership. What we're really looking for is a cultural shift in agencies. So it's taking us longer than we might have hoped, but I feel that the product we're delivering is being well met. And in terms of the satisfaction of individuals taking the training, it is receiving high marks. I don't know if Director Burgess wants to say anything more on that.
Good morning again. Ayesha Burgess, Office of Youth and Trauma Services. I will just add that we are getting overwhelming requests from those agencies that are listed in the legislation. So we are truly excited about that, which is why I mentioned earlier around our, building our office capacity and our staff capacity to kind of field those requests while our contractor is working with those larger agencies. So currently in FY '25, we are training the Baltimore City Fire Department. We are beginning to enter into the next phase of training with the Department of Planning around executive coaching. And we have received requests from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, as well as the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. So starting Friday, we will be training about 159 youth work sites. That is going to be handled specifically by our staff. So we're excited about that, and this is the second year. Last year, we trained about 258 youth work sites. So we're going to continue to do that work. We've had a meeting with Department of Planning, I'm sorry, the Department of Public Works. And we are meeting with the Chief of Administration to develop a schedule around listening sessions before we enter into a training phase with that agency.
It's, as you said, very important work. I'm glad that agencies are agreeing and wanting to be able to have that work. I was, my first term was on the Trauma Informed Task Force. And it is, it's very important in terms of how we're also becoming better at customer service, really, right? As well as thinking differently around what's really happening in our city. So thanks for taking that on. I really appreciate it. And it's a good problem to have that you're in such high demand. So, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any? Yeah, give me one. I have some as well. I'll pass it off to you. Yeah, I just have one follow-up and some more. All right, sorry about that. So the Health Department plays a critical role in the HIV and STD care, including treatment services for uninsured residents. And with the concerning cuts of $14.8 million to the Ryan White funding from the state, can you help us understand how many people might be affected by this cut and what services are likely to be scaled back as a result?
Yes, I'd like to call on Deputy Jennifer Martin.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Councilman. So the cut in our Ryan White Part B dollars occurred partially in FY '24 and then with the remaining cuts that occurred for FY '25. So this is, some of that funding supported the BCHD, Sexual Health and Wellness Clinic, which is part of the cuts that we talked about earlier with Councilman Parker. And then the rest of those cuts happened to our Ryan White subrecipients, which are various organizations throughout Baltimore City who provide services to people living with HIV. So we did our best to look across our service categories for Ryan White and look across the partners who are receiving those dollars and to prioritize services based off of data. But there are a number of subrecipients who are now no longer being funded or who had their funding reduced. So we know that that means that there are some subrecipients who are able to serve fewer clients.
And just as a quick, quick follow-up, have any major medical institutions like Hopkins, UMass, or LifeBridge stepped up and I ask? Because I know Johns Hopkins has been involved in legal action against the federal government over these issues. So I would love to know if they are actually showing up at the community level to help you guys with these types of resources.
So all of the institutions that you mentioned are Ryan White providers in some service categories. And we work very closely with all of them. There is a lot of different activity happening around funding at the federal level. And I know some of those partners are advocating. I'm not as familiar with whether they're participating in particular legal action or not, but I believe some of them are. And they also, they participate in our, with the Ryan White Program, with the Planning Council, which is the planning board for Ryan White dollars here in the Baltimore EMA. And so we see their input and advocacy there. Another, a number of our other subrecipients are engaged in a lot of advocacy work around HIV and STI prevention. We also have an HIV planning group that's part, that helps to weigh in. It goes back to the question earlier in the hearing today around community engagement. We have an HIV planning group that weighs in and provides guidance around the HIV prevention dollars coming into the city from CDC. And so we are seeing advocacy from many of those partners. And then I will also just add, we are part of a national association as well, National Association for STD Directors. And there's a lot of advocacy at the federal level with them. And we've been participating in many meetings with them. And as the Commissioner mentioned during her remarks at the top of the hearing, you know, Dr. Greenbaum participated in a meeting with congressional delegation two weeks ago to talk about the importance of HIV and STI funding.
Thank you for your continuous advocacy under such extreme circumstances. Councilman Parker is going to close us out with the Health Department.
Thank you much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank you all. Particularly, I know the Health Department does so many different things, but one of the left in particular, we've had a great experience working with animal services there in line 716, some really creative funky situations over the last few months. And just really appreciate the dedication and the kind of the focus on animal well-being and getting us through those. I do note that the budget, I want to thank the administration and the Budget Director for the expanded support for barks. We hear lots of different budget items get tossed our way by constituents, but this is one of the top few items that I'd heard about. And so really appreciate that the administration was hearing that too and responding. Think the, the last piece I wanted to ask about, just an update. Deputy Commissioner Martin, you mentioned, when we're talking about clinics before, and I know we just returned to the Ryan White funding there, the clinics with the electronic medical records system that was instituted, my understanding was, and we've spoken about this before, my understanding was there were some, there were some challenges with the rollout in terms of bills going out, erroneous bills, bills that wouldn't have gone out before, folks being confused by bills, folks maybe being discouraged from seeking service because things that had been free or covered, now all of a sudden we're showing up as like, please pay us now. Can you speak to that a little bit? And mostly, has that been resolved? Are we in a better place now, you know, a year in?
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Councilman. So I want to start just by saying that there's the implementation of the EMR, and then there's also implementation and expansion of billing within our clinical services. And while the two are related, they are also separate. So with implementation of the EMR specifically, we are doing that in a, we rolled that out last summer. And, you know, I think the implementation of the EMR has gone fairly well. And we have a phased implementation. So we started with our direct clinical services, and then actually we'll be expanding the use of the EMR to some of our other programming in the department. At the time that we rolled out the new EMR last summer, we also started to do expanded billing for services within the Sexual Health and Wellness Clinic. And that proved to be more difficult than we had anticipated. And we have learned a lot of lessons. And we are, have been working very hard over the last year to improve our capacity and our processes and systems to be able to implement billing effectively and efficiently. There were, as you mentioned, some issues with patients receiving large bills. And so we have been working to correct that. I want to be very clear that we stopped that from happening and have been working to ensure that all of those bills have been paid.
Thank you for that update. The last, just to make formal, something I had asked about before. In line, Service Line 316, the Youth and Trauma Contractual Services, I know there was mention of error. If we can just, a formal committee request that whatever that is supposed to look like, do you send to us just so we kind of have the final corrected numbers?
So it's related to a federal grant that was listed in Service 316 but is actually tied to the Children and Maternal Health Service. This is a teen pregnancy prevention grant.
And what's the size of that shift? I mean, I can just update it by hand.
1.6 million.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for all your amazing questions. And also thank you, Health Department, for just all the advocacy you guys are doing, especially in light of time. You are much needed more than ever. And as a council, we're going to try to do everything we can to make sure that you guys stay as essential and a core piece of this city really seeing its renaissance. So thank you. And at this time, we're going to have the Mayor's Office of Adult Affairs and Advocacy with Ms. Harmon. Is she here? There you are.